July nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, meeting of the Villarica Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals is called to order. We have a quorum, all four members are here. Reading of the agenda, the agenda includes approval of the agenda, old business, which is approval of the minutes from June sixth meeting, new business, which is discussion of administrative matters, staff comments, public comments, and then adjournment.
I move you accept the old minutes?
No.
Previous?
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Oh, okay, move to accept the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Four zero. Under old business, we have the approval of the minutes from the June sixth, two thousand sixteen hearing. Does anybody have any comments, changes, or additions?
Move that we accept?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. New business, discussion of administrative matters, which is specifically our proposed bylaws. Thank you very much, Matt, for the work you've made on this. Button to get a red light?
Yeah, it's a red light, it's on, it's on.
I'll start off. Overall, very excellent work. I was wondering if the terms of the office, how long would, how long a member will not be an officer, but be on the Board of Appeals should be included in there?
Mr. Chairman, can I, could I ask if you would just go down through it?
Okay.
Article one, two, three, like that, and go through section by section, and see if anybody has a comment on each one?
That's a good idea.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
That's fine. Article one is authorization. Comments, amendments?
I would just say that, to be honest with you, for article one, I just found the best possible way to word this, I didn't want to say that we're establishing the ZBA, because the city council establishes it, but I just wanted to drop your paragraph to kind of name out, get some defined terms out of the way, and kind of like state where we came from, so I'm absolutely open to it. This article, any other article, absolutely open, any kind of modifications, edits, wherever you guys want, better way of phrasing it, stuff, including from the staff.
I like it.
It's fine.
In general, I think the board of, the bylaws are going to be fairly general, because they're going to refer to a city charter, or a city ordinance, or something, you know, in general, so being a little vague is not a problem.
You might want to be more specific about authorized pursuant to chapter nine, section eleven, because it's, that's the charter, the charter's the first section of the Code of Ordinances. So you might want to specifically state that that's the charter, because there is a section nine, a chapter nine, over in the regular Code of Ordinances, that's not, yeah, that's separate, so.
So that needs to be changed to charter, then?
Right.
I was trying to figure that out in municode.
Yeah, yeah.
Article two says, is purpose, and it performed duties and powers as prescribed by the city council pursuant to and with the charter. I was looking at the city of Elberton. And in theirs, it says the zoning board of adjustment shall have the following duties and powers, hear and decide appeals, to hear and make decisions on special exemptions, to make decisions on variance requests, to make a decision on temporary buildings. I always just want to do, do we want to leave it very generic, or do we want to list some of the things that, and then the last bullet point is other items as?
Well-
For by the city council, a city charter.
The charter is very general, in that it doesn't really state the powers and duties of the zoning board of appeals. The council is getting ready to do a charter review, that might be something that we need to suggest to them, that they delineate your powers, if that's something you all want to-
In the charter, and we just refer to the city charter?
Right, right.
Yeah, because I was looking at, when I looked at the chapter nine, the section eleven, which I thought we had a printout of, I guess that is at the charter. Right, you know, I just, part of my thing was, I didn't want to, every time city council goes through and they give us powers or take what powers, I didn't want to have to amend these bylaws. So that was kind of my thought, if we just left it, you know, as prescribed by, you know, city council, basically the Villarica City Code, because that would come from the ordinance from the city council.
I agree, and then, and then the charter can more specifically delineate the powers and duties, and-
I would like to recommend, then, that we append that section from the city charter that governs what we do, something so that we have kind of a list of, this is what, these are the enumerated duties and responsibility of the ZBA that comes with it, not necessarily as part of the bylaws here, but at least something that's, that's handy for reference.
If you, legal, if you list an appendix due to a legal document, is the appendix the same as the document, or is it just an explanation of the document? Well-
It is, but if we define it as being the whatever section, or wherever it's looking, in the city charter, or the, yeah, charter, and then they change the charter, then that new changed piece automatically is, once it's approved and official, then that's our guidance, not what the old guidance was, and so we don't have to take action to approve any of that change, because that's done by the larger elected body.
If we cut and paste, though-
Oh.
There'll be two different documents.
I understand, yeah, then, that's what I was going to suggest, maybe that we just appended it, or if we just refer to it by reference, then have a copy for each of us to be able to refer to.
Well, I mean, you know, my thinking was, and I guess we could have penned a copy, but then you do get, raise the issue of whether that copy, when we certify that as a bylaw, and again, I'm not Villarica City Council, I mean, city council, legal council, you know, though I am attorney. My concern would be that you are, some people could read that as incorporating my reference into your bylaws, and then you would have to re-admit your bylaws, again. My other issue is that I don't, and maybe Janet can speak to this, about how public these will be, I mean, you know, for example, you can go to the Villarica City Code, it's on municode, a person, an applicant coming in can very easily go through and say, okay, these are the standards I have to do to meet, to go before the ZBA and the city of Villarica, whereas these bylaws are probably not going to be available on the website, they're a little more obscure, although they're public documents, they're probably not as easily accessible to the public than the code would be, and that's why I just gave large deference to the code, and I focused more on organizational, and not a standard or substance, substance kind of bylaws, like we had in some of these other codes. That was, that was my line of thinking, so.
Understand the thing, I just, I'm okay either way, my, my real thing is so that, so that we have the enumerated section of the charter that tells us what we're supposed to.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's something that's available, Janet, right, on the website, and that we could-
At villarica.org, forms and documents?
And you can go to municode, that's where I pulled a lot of the city codes from, and I just, and I'm just afraid of nailing us down, and then having to go back through this process again, because, I mean, you know, they could change ordinance tomorrow, or, you know, with whatever kind of process, and I just didn't want to-
Well, if we, if we present this to the city council, and they approve it, the city charter is going to change here, in some degree, in the near future.
The charter says, the mayor and council of Villarica shall appoint a zoning board of appeals to hear cases involving variances from the zoning rules and regulations. It's my understanding that you also hear appeals from staff determination, so that needs to be updated in the charter, and-
So appeals from whom?
From staff determination.
But also-
It would be appeals from the zoning board, if the zoning board-
It won't be from the planning and zoning-
No, it won't be from planning and zoning, it'll be a variance, any deviation from the-
They don't, they don't take a variance to the planning and zoning board, they take it to staff.
They take it to y'all. There are certain duties that staff has given the authority to approve, as long as it's consistent with the code, such as a, I don't know, building permit or something. If I denied that, and they wanted to appeal, they would appeal to y'all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as, you know, we're going, we're going to let the city charter and the city code be the source document.
Right, right.
And also, Janet, just a quick question, so even though city charter, you know, gives us the variance jurisdiction, I guess you would say, the city council, at any time, could just pass an ordinance and say, you know, if somebody wants to apply for this, X permit, whatever it may be, and then, if you want to apply for this, you have to go before the ZBA, they could just say that, and then give us, basically confer us.
They could, I don't see that happening, but they could, because typically a zoning board appeals only hears variances and appeals, so. But yeah, I mean, that conceivably, that could happen.
And so, just to be clear, if P and Z has a request before them regarding something, let's just say this is going to be a change in ownership of a piece of property, and the new owner wants a different zoning designation or something, and P and Z declines that request, there is no other avenue of appeal, they have to-
It's the city council, P and Z is only a recommending board. Everything they hear goes onto council, with the exception of a final plat.
And then, so we don't, we're not involved whatsoever in hearing appeals of those decisions?
No. Appeals to the, from a city council ruling go to superior court.
So like, for instance, when we had that Hawthorne residential in here last time, last month, if they, I mean, we're different than P and Z in the fact that we're not just recommending, but we are a final, final decision, so if Hawthorne didn't like our decision, they could then appeal to the city council, but if they liked our decision, which I believe they did, then they're done. So, so that's kind of, that's kind of the thing about P and Z, I mean, P and Z gets all the publicity, but we all actually have more power than they do.
Yeah, but they have to meet more often than we do.
Well, I understand that appeal, appeal to our decision can be made to the city council, and then to the court.
Into the court, yeah.
Nobody's final, except for the court. And no, I don't know which court that is.
It starts with Superior Court of the county. Yeah, and then it can go higher than that, if need be.
So as long as we have access to a city charter and a city code that explains our responsibilities, the article two as stated is fine?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Article three-
Well, I would say, how about, you could, we could always say, just consistent with the city charter and the Villarica City Code as currently stands, and is amended from time to time.
Amended from time to time.
Then, then we don't have to worry about subsequent, there's no doubt, then, that we mean it to go along with any changes.
And the charter's not amended that often?
Ma'am?
The charter is not amended that often?
No, no. And I'm sorry, my hearing is not the best in the world, and so I, what I keep asking for.
It's okay, my voice is not the best in the world, either.
Well, you can tell, I used to be an old soccer coach, and my players at the other end of the field could all wazier when I was telling them, so.
Needed to do that to be successful.
Yeah.
Article three is organization, and I guess that's where my, my comment about the terms for members, you know, three, is it a three-year term? Is that, do I remember that correctly?
What I read, that's what it was. I read three years.
Should that be stuck in there?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We've got, we've got the terms of office for the officers at one year, but not for the members.
So I can make a section right below, what I'm doing, I'll do, let's make a section three point oh, whatever, and our number there, and then I'll just say each member-
Maybe put it between two and three.
Right. Shall have term of office. It is three years, does that sound, that is right?
Well, the way, the way it is now, it looks like it's a member for life.
Well, you could be reappointed, I think if there's anything in the city charter that says you can't serve multiple terms.
That's true.
I'll put three years, I'll just, I'll double check, I think it's an application.
It was an application.
I'll look at that, if I don't have it, I don't have it with me. And then I'll adjust that. Considering that for section three point oh three B, considering we're not meeting on a regular schedule, it doesn't appear that, that's why I put it in there at the first regular meeting of the calendar of the year. That can happen in August.
Well, on section four point oh one, you show regular meetings, and that was a question-
Yeah, that was the question that the city attorney had raised, he said, I don't think you need to schedule regular meetings unless you have business, and I told him that we kind of agreed that we would set this time for a meeting, but if we didn't have any official business, that we would cancel this meeting.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, and that's kind of the way I thought about it, too, but I did, was, I was curious if there were language, language, that maybe other boards could play that out, that kind of-
Yeah, we could always say that the meetings, I don't remember which section there, but we could always say at the discretion of the chairman, and if there's no business pending, then we'll just roll it over till the next month.
There are, there are special call meetings, but it would be convenient if we could mark our calendars and kind of, one particular day of the month, kind of try and keep it free.
Right.
That's what I've done, is I've got a recurring event in mind now.
Yeah.
And it works best for staff, too, because of all the other meetings, we can keep the publication and notification schedules.
I didn't know if that had any impact on the forty-five days that the city has to reply to an appeal, or application.
No, because the deadline we've established for notification and publication, and the application deadline are all based on that period of time, so.
On three point zero two, isn't the number of members set in the charter? Doesn't say anything about it? It's just up to a vote, or something to be set by the council?
I'm not sure if that's something that they are going to discuss in the charter amendment, the charter review that they're getting ready to do. It may be something that's just established by the city manager.
Looking through the samples that Alyssa gave us, you know, for the smaller cities, not for Gwinnett or Kennesaw, but the smaller ones, five seems to be the-
Yeah, you don't want to have an even number, even though we do right now, but, because you end up with a tie, but are you-
Well, why don't we just simply say five, unless amended by action of the city council?
It says five.
No, but it comes back someplace else, and it says, if the city council deems necessary more, from what I read someplace here, if they could prescribe more.
Yeah, that's quite, that's quite the, I figured we have five, and if they, in the charter, and they can override the bylaws. Again, the language, I just felt like we just didn't have to come back. I hope we have seven members now, so let's go amend the bylaws, I just, you know, not that this is too much an arduous process, I just didn't think it's something we want to keep coming up here to do.
Yeah.
At the, at the city council meeting, where they're talking about this stuff, there was, there was one commission that could have, you know, more people, and they wanted to put more people on it. I don't know what that did to their bylaws.
Yeah, was that the Downtown Development Authority and the Development Authority, I think?
I think it was one of the authorities, but-
Those are set by state.
But those are set by state, yeah.
There was one that they went back and forth on about whether or not they could have six or seven people.
I did think about whether or not, I would have liked to see what other board bylaws look like, just to get an idea of how they handle certain situations, so.
Well, every board is different, too, and its duties, and so that kind of dictates what's covered in here, like, the Main Street bylaws are really long.
Yeah, 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 I know that.
There's a bunch of sub-organizations in there, too.
Right, a bunch of sub-organizations, and, see, their bylaws are more substantive, too, because, and that's why I looked at these bylaws, and I said, this doesn't really need to be substantive, it needs to be more administrative, because the city council puts the substance out there through the code and charter, and whereas I think Main Street has a little more independent type of, by virtue of this relationship with Georgia, Main Street, and National Main Street, and all that stuff, so.
So are we finished with page one?
I'm Thomas, so we took, but the language of three point oh two, does that, that work for you, or?
So the five members, or such members as prescribed by the city council?
Yeah. It works, I just didn't know whether the number was actually already established, or not, okay. In fact, I'm good down till we get to four point oh one, unless somebody's got something else.
One thing I didn't, and I just realized, and one thing I didn't do is I didn't put anything in there, I put it in there for about a resignation, I can remember one that resigned, I didn't put anything about a vacancy, because my imagine, my thinking was that if someone would resign, that's how a vacancy would occur, and then the city council process takes over on how they appoint, and think about any other kind of vacancy, I didn't, I mean, unless you guys think-
Yeah, if there's a vacancy on, on the board, then the city should continue to try and fill it.
Right.
And since they're appointed by the, by the city council, that, that's not something we get involved with, other than-
Yeah, it's different, it's different from a vacancy of an officer than, so.
But you're talking about vacancy where you've got death, or somebody moving away, or something like that?
We have four, and we're supposed to have five, so the, the staff and city council should continue to solicit for another member.
And is that the posture we're in now, and we're soliciting for another?
It's still, I think, listed on the website, that there's one slot open, I don't know that we're actively advertising for that, but, but I can mention to the city manager.
Yeah, maybe David could put it in his weekly notes, you know?
Yeah, because we don't, if we get a case next month, we don't want to end up with a tie situation, so.
Anything else in section three, article three? All right, Tom, you said you had something in article four?
Yeah, four point oh one, subsection B. We've kind of got a little overlap from that into, um- Oh, I don't remember now, there was another, another section, but I was just wondering if we shouldn't. You know, I, I think my preference would be that we have an established third Tuesday, yeah, third Tuesday of every month at six PM, at the Hope Bishop Justice Center, you know, unless such meeting is canceled due to lack of issues or agenda items or something.
Somebody had mentioned the phrase at the discretion of the chairman.
Yes.
Is that okay language for y'all, I mean, because I would, somebody in the staff would be letting the chairman know that we didn't have any business, and they could make that call, cancel them.
And that would be my preference, would be that we have an established, you're responsible for being here the third Tuesday of every month. Excuse me. Unless we cancel it. And then, even if half the meetings are canceled, that's okay.
Yeah.
But then, it's just like me, after the other day, I had to double check, make sure I knew which, what the time was for certain and things, and so I just went ahead and made this a recurring event in my calendar, and, you know, it's easy to skip, but it can also be really easy to forget if you don't have it in there.
Yeah, and if we don't schedule it, we run that risk of somebody being out of town and having to, to schedule something for a specific case, and-
Is that a, having a scheduled meeting, is that a benefit to any of the Villarica residents that may become an applicant?
It might be, I mean, because they would know upfront how long the process was going to take, and they wouldn't have to wait on us to find a time that's convenient for everybody.
See, I think every board generally sets something like this, I mean, and then it's incumbent on each board member to manage their own time, and to be there when the, that's just part of the responsibility of serving.
So if we put at the discretion of the chairman, not that it needs to be in the, in the bylaws, but, you know, how much notice would everybody like of cancellation?
Well, we generally, we have to publish fourteen days in advance, so we're going to know fourteen days in advance if there's-
Nothing to publish, then go to cancel, okay.
Right.
By law, we couldn't have it.
And then our notice just says we won't meet because there's no business in it.
Exactly, like Matthew said, by law, we couldn't have a meeting if we didn't publish it fourteen days in advance, so.
Do we want to add a section C here, and say that time and place of meeting may, you know, change at chair's discretion? Add section C here?
You can just say, or you can just say time and place.
I don't think we can change the place, because they want to do the-
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, the whole upstream.
So it's-
Time or-
I think, I think we just need to add a sentence under regular meetings, you know, at the discretion of the chairman, that the meeting may be canceled due to, due to lack of business.
Okay.
The discretion of the chairman is actually staff.
You might want to also put something in there about the possibility of a call meeting.
There's a special called meetings on four point oh three.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that, okay.
So as far as the agenda's concerned, on four point oh two, I just use my best understanding of the process, so this is for y'all, I mean, tell us, if you guys want to refine this any further, because I know this is, this is the lifting, part of the heavy lifting you guys do to get us prepped, so, you know, it's on comments.
I wasn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, but in several city council cases, this four point oh two, C, the initial presentation by the applicant, in a lot of the city council meetings, when there's something to be decided, staff makes a presentation-
Staff makes the initial presentation.
And then the individual comes forward to expand, answer questions, I don't know if you want to-
And that's a good point, because I, I kind of feel like staff needs to make a, an initial summary, executive summary, kind of, of the case before.
And, and we need to hear the recommendation before the individual?
Well, it depends on the size of the application package, or whatever we're working on, down there in section E, where it talks about packets will be provided in advance to the members, but, you know, advance could be five o'clock instead of six, I mean, I'd like to say that we get it a couple of days- I mean, I'd like to say that we get it a couple of days or something because sometimes it takes a little longer to. You know what? I like to go ride by. I know that sounds strange, but I can ride by the street and take a look and, um. Well, I did too.
We typically get packets out the Friday before a meeting on Tuesday. Is that enough time for y'all?
Yeah.
You're talking about sending it electronically?
Either one, either electronically or we could hand deliver it.
If you- if you send it electronically so I can get it, I mean, I'll get it on Friday, then that gives me the weekend to read it and- and do a drive-by or something. That would be good.
Planning and zoning, um, we hand deliver their packets just because they're- they're pretty large usually and, you know, maps that need to follow out.
Okay, if, yeah, if we can get them, of course, I love that too. So long as they're delivered by, you know, Saturday sometime, so I'll get.
Okay.
Get a chance to read through them.
Okay, so do we want to add something here regarding that?
We- we wanted it, on C, we wanted to change it that the individual requesting agenda item will make a presentation after this.
Yeah, I was going to go back to that. The staff makes your initial presentation, but the applicant must be present or should be present?
To present their.
If it's a close decision, I would think the applicant needed to make a- a personal appeal.
I mean, we tell everybody they- they need to be there, but we've had cases where people didn't show up.
Then you can't get questions in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think, I mean, I- I think the applicant needs to be here to present evidence, present their case.
It's not as big of a deal on planning and zoning because they're just a recommending board, but this board, I can see it would be a- a big issue if the applicant didn't show up.
So we're just, on B, we're going to, I mean, um, C, we're going to say, uh, the initial, uh, presentation will be done by staff. With additional comments and amplification by the individual requesting, the individual or their representative. Because it could be their attorney or somebody.
So by the way, I'm taking notes of all this, so my thought was I would just kind of go back and do the drawing board and.
Thank you.
And then we'll meet next week or, or something.
I was thinking they were recording it.
We are recording it.
We can't meet next week because we have to have.
That was next month.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe before next, I don't know. I don't know what there is.
And we need to make sure whatever input is in here, that we get that input into the city charter. Needs to be in there before they.
Okay. Leave their meetings next week.
Special called meetings, um. Is that, a special meeting gets around the fourteen day notice?
It would definitely have to have the fourteen day notice.
In order to have public notice.
Should we put a provision here that says all special called meetings must comply with the notice requirements of these bylaws and state law, city council?
It's called the Zoning Procedures Act.
Zoning Procedures Act is what we usually call it.
Well, you can call that too, it doesn't matter.
All special call meetings.
I'm like you're peeing from a weak rose. It's not like you're peeing from a weak rose.
Never noticed.
Real quick on- on, going back to four point oh two though, um, because we were talking about, about getting the agenda packets to us by a certain time. Is that something that we want to include in the bylaws?
It ju- it just said we'll be provided in advance of the scheduled meeting, and I- I think we have to trust staff to- to provide it in enough time for us to assimilate the information.
That's fine.
Let's work over that, just as it is. Yeah, okay, great, okay.
I know you have.
Quorum looks pretty standard.
Yeah, on the quorum language, you know, because I thought about this, is it, is it fifty percent or fifty-one percent?
I think it's fifty-one.
Yeah, okay. I went back and forth on that a couple of times. I tried to look at some other stuff, but I couldn't find it.
Here's the other, at four point oh six, I was looking for it, couldn't find it, about notice before the meeting. If we're going to establish as our standard meeting time, this time every month, shouldn't we probably change that to notice of every special called meeting or something like that? Well, except, you know, you- you still fourteen days.
But they- they still, they put out the fourteen days for- for even a standard meeting.
Yeah, so, so we need to amend that, don't we?
So we said not less than fourteen days.
Yeah, four point oh six.
Mm-hmm, four point oh six A.
Yeah, four point oh six A.
So we want to change that to fourteen days or, is that, is that your thought?
Yeah, because that's what, in accordance with our, with our legal requirement.
Notification to the member, not to the public.
Right. But if you got to have everything in, in order to do one, why not? Or maybe they, maybe they'd be putting together the.
Still, the staff may know that they've got, they've got something for the, for the board, but they may not have completed their work and may not even have a recommendation yet. That there's been an application.
But I think what this is saying is that we're just giving y'all notice that the meeting will take place, but. Not necessarily that we've got everything ready for you to look at.
It says to each member not less than, you know, so th- this is notification to the members that there will be a meeting.
Yeah, that's good.
So it's fourteen good though, or do you guys want?
Well, I believe it has to be.
And I can see where like, you know, we- we would kind of want to know two weeks out, making our personal business, whether or not we're going to have one that month, you know. Because, you know, for whatever reason, two weeks out would be good, but I don't know, five da- five days is just what I put in there, so.
I think, I think the five days was kind of along the lines of- of the package was- was more where that came from. The documentation for the meeting.
Do you guys see any issue with fourteen days or five days?
No, because we know in fourteen days before the meeting if we're going to have one or not.
So maybe we should make it thirteen days.
Well, the next, so they can send a notice the next day, yeah.
Yeah, so that way you can send a notice the next day, because someone walks in at four forty-five on application packet, you know, they got it all done. And, you know, so maybe make it thirteen days or something.
Well, if they walk in at the deadline.
We don't, we don't take it that way.
I was about to say.
We actually, we actually have a deadline for the application that's sooner than that.
I was going to say.
Sooner than the publication requirement.
If you do a, a close perusal of their request package, I'm sure you can find something that's missing, right, or needs amplification.
We, yeah, we don't get that close to the publication deadline, because the paper, like, for instance, if it's a holiday. Like, I remember July fourth was- was the holiday and we had to decide on a meeting and two weeks out and they weren't going to publish the paper on Monday and. We had to get it in really quick and it just gets too complicated if you try to rush one through at the last minute, so. So we have the deadline for the application actually sooner than that publication deadline.
Very good.
That's fine.
Good.
Since we're, since they're going to publish that anyway, they just.
So Janet, you said, does it, does it, the ZB, the ZB, the CPA that you said that requires the notice time, right?
Right.
So I should add that, I'm going to add that in here. Georgia Zoning Procedures Act. For, for part B, for our, well, it was four point oh six B, I'm going to add, in addition to the Georgia Open Meetings Act, I'm going to add the Zoning Procedures Act and other applicable state laws, just to make that clear. Four point oh nine, I wasn't sure if we wanted to put like a straight recitation of the public participation procedures of the city in there. Um, so I put something in there that just kind of left deference. And it was also consistent with what I've seen the city do, so, as far as public participation is concerned.
For city council, public participation is, is early, but here, the public participation should be after staff's presentation, after the applicant's presentation, then.
Yeah, I would think that after staff and after the applicant makes a presentation, then if there are people who have other things to add, either in favor or against the proposal, that, that's the appropriate time for them to come in after they've, the facts have been laid out for us.
Well.
That, that would be, that would, there would be actually, if, if we had people here, there would be two public comments. One for just general subjects like when John Hannibach gets up and, and, and wants to talk, and then there, the one would be public comment on an applicant's.
Right, you're required to.
Don won't come and want to talk here, I'll sit my dog on him.
No, he goes to the planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Um, you're required to have a, um, public hearing for the case itself in order to let the public speak for or against that case, but then you're also required to have the public comment for general matters. And you could do that before the business or after the business of the meeting. City council chooses to do it before.
Better to emulate city council so that people, the- the flow is the same?
Planning and zoning does it after, so it doesn't matter.
Villarica's the only city in which I've seen it do it after, or before, excuse me. I've always seen it after.
I don't have a preference, I just.
Which, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you do public comment afterwards and you've already decided on it, it's not.
And that was kind of the, the thinking when city council moved their public comment to the beginning of the meeting. Um, it gave people a chance to, if they knew something was on the agenda, they could go ahead and speak out for or against it before it came out. Because all of those issues on city council agenda do not require a public hearing, just certain ones dealing with zoning.
No, all of them, I mean, any kind of application for variance or an appeal would require a public hearing. So we're going to prob- I guess we'll need something in it that lays that out in addition to a general public participation requirement, I guess. So, and is that laid out in the ZPL?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so maybe I'll, maybe I'll just add an extra section and say that, um, you know, all public hearings will be conducted in accordance with state law. The ZP, the zoning procedures act and such.
I cannot imagine there being a lengthy, involved, public comment on our policies, procedures though in general. I mean, it's not, that's not the sort of thing like you'd see at city council, it's like, uh. And I would think that most of what we do is so esoteric anyway that you wouldn't have a thirty minute discussion of something about our procedure, yeah, our bylaws.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have, I think we'll have more public hearings on, you know, wherever applications are brought, but I don't think we're going to have people talking about.
I don't think so.
You guys should have seven members instead of five. Or whatever it may be. We don't, I mean, we don't have a budget, we don't have, you know, and a lot of the stuff we do is that.
We can, we can spend whatever we want, right, because we don't have any limits, so if it's not prohibited, prohibited, it's allowed, right?
Um, I want to go back to attendance for a minute. We have in most of our other boards that I'm involved with.
What section is that, please?
It's four point oh seven.
Okay.
Um, we have a rule that if somebody doesn't show up without notice, like, say, two or three meetings, they're.
Three point oh four B.
Did I miss that? I did, three consecutive unexcused.
This officers.
Okay, that is officers.
Oh, that is, so it's not members.
Four point three.
Why don't we use that same language though to do just ZBA members?
I'm sorry, where are we at?
Three point oh four B.
Addresses the officers.
That says then just be removed from office, but down here in four point oh seven, why don't we say we can remove them from ZBA?
Well, we can't remove them.
City council?
Or we can re.
Yeah, I think, actually, that is why I didn't put it in there, because I wasn't sure what's in the county council would do that, so.
And I think we're all adults and we chose to be here, so I don't think, you know, someone chose us, I think we should be responsible enough to know.
There are a number of people on, on other advisory boards that virtually don't attend.
No.
Well, I don't think you would see that here, would you?
Well, I wouldn't, you wouldn't think, but you never know, so.
I don't mean because like, we're not having, I don't, I don't believe at this time we're going to have monthly meetings, so if you missed, someone may miss three meetings.
Might miss a whole year.
Yeah, might miss a whole year, I don't know.
But if you don't attend for a whole year, I mean, it's only three meetings, but if you don't attend, I mean, it's not like, it's not fair to the people who are coming in, you know, with an appeal or want to be heard, uh, they, they should have a full board, uh, to hear their appeal and, um. So I agree that after, yeah, and maybe it's after two unexcused absences in a row that we then recommend to the council that they consider replacing that member or something.
And we usually don't call it unexcused, we call it, um, absence without notification.
AWOL.
Yeah. A one. That's up to y'all, but.
But, but it's not a firing squad offense here.
Everybody want to do? I'm down with it.
They're probably, although, although we obviously don't need that mechanism now, a year from now, we might need that mechanism.
Do we want to just, do we want to extract the language that we did in, uh, what was it, I'm sorry?
No, because that relates to officers.
That doesn't relate to officers.
Oh, track it, yeah.
Fail to fulfill their duties and have three consecutive, um, unexcused, um.
Absences without notice.
Without notice from regular ZBA meetings will be recommended for removal by the city council.
And the city council does have to approve these bylaws, so.
There may, they may have some comments if they want to add, just to make Janet's job harder.
And I'm surprised that council doesn't have a set of its own bylaws, procedures or something that says for the boards, for the boards that we appoint, that if there are absences without notice, you know, of two or three consecutive times, that, that, that position will be declared vacant and, and somebody new will be, uh, appointed, because council wouldn't want its boards to be non-functioning if it was, whether it's cemetery area or, um, parks and rick or whatever.
That might be something we need to address, staff needs to address with council.
Something like Main Street Advisory Board, you, you get the board meeting, then you got a, a subcommittee meeting and that you chair, and then you, you may have another subcommittee meeting that you're on. So you could have three meetings a month, scheduled meetings a month.
But they're supposed to be grown up and you hold your hand up if you can't fulfill the duty.
Yeah, so in section three point eleven of the Code of Orders says, I don't know if this is part of the charter or code, but it does have the board commissioning authorities and I did reference that and I did not see, kind of what you were saying, Thomas, a, um, any kind of thing that lays out how many you miss and bad things and such, so.
What is the section? Yeah, that's in the charter.
If we, if we pick a number we're comfortable for, for recommendations. If, if we, if we pick a number we're comfortable for, for recommendations to the city council, then, then the issue is, is the city council, do they, do they want to discuss that, and, and, and maybe there's mitigating circumstances or something like that, that can be presented to the, to the city council, but.
Do we want, do we want the board to make the recommendation to the city council, or do we wanna leave that to the chairman to make that recommendation?
Or the staff?
Or the staff, or the secretary, maybe?
Did the board will recommend to city staff?
Or the staff will may make the recommendation itself? Or the chairman will make the recommendation itself?
I'm comfortable either way. To get on the, to get on the agenda, it's have, gonna have to go to David Milliron or the city manager to get on the agenda.
Right, and to make a recommendation, you all would have to do a motion, and you'd have to, I think it really needs to come from y'all. Needs to be a recommendation from y'all. But it might be something they need to address in the charter as well. There are some boards that people cannot be removed from. I believe Villarica Development Authority.
Industrial Development.
The Industrial Development, and I think maybe the DDA, that you cannot be removed from those boards.
They keep politics out of them?
I guess so. Yeah, yeah, they're legislative, legislatively created, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna add, so I'm gonna basically for, I'm gonna make it four point oh seven C, I'm gonna track the language of three point oh four B, and add the absent, without notice language. Do y'all want that in three point oh four B, the without notice language there too, as far as officers?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that we're asking for permission to be-
Right, and, you know, then we've gotta, if you say unexcused, you've gotta establish what is an unexcused absence.
So we're gonna take, take out unexcused, then?
And make it-
Make it absences without notice.
If, if, if we've got something going on that we have to, I, I'm gonna assume that we, we would let Janet know that, you know, in an email or a phone call or whatever, that I have a conflict I can't get out of it.
Alright, so I'm gonna track the language of three point oh four B, remove unexcused from three point four-
So like, where were you?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so for four point oh seven C, I'm gonna track the language of three point oh four B. Um, I'll remove the word unexcused from both three point oh four B and the new language in four point oh seven, uh, C. And, uh, I'll add absence without notice, and then also say for this, for, for four point oh seven C, I'll say that the ZBA will make a recommendation to city council.
For the removal of a-
For the removal of the member.
Okay, I'm good down to four point ten, I've got a question in four point ten, if somebody, unless somebody's got something else.
I'm good, tell four point ten, four point ten.
You can go ahead, four point ten.
One, the last sentence is, "A certified agenda should be made of all closed sessions or ZBA meetings." Is, I don't think I've seen certified before in here, have we?
I don't know where that language came from.
I didn't, and what constitutes certified rather than just plain old agenda? And, um, is this, do you actually mean agenda, or do you mean minutes, or?
I think it means agenda.
Have an agenda that is not, not available to the public, but it is certified as, as published?
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds, I mean, is that, is that the?
It was just a little nitpicky thing there, and, um, in the, I don't know if it really, this really belongs in that section, but it seemed like maybe it did. Since we're talking about consultation with attorney on legal matters, deliberation regarding the values of real property, or competitive utility matters and economic development negotiations, what is our ability to obtain outside information, expertise, or advice in some of those? I mean, you know, we may, we may feel like that we need an attorney, or CPA, or an engineer, or somebody to give us additional advice on some particular issue. Do we have the ability to request that? Uh, do we expect those people to provide it free, gratis? Is there a way, if we have to pay for some of that? Do we have a, a budget for obtaining that information? How do we?
I believe, um, you would always have the use of the city attorney.
Of course, it may not be his area of expertise, either.
It may not be, if you need, you know, if you needed an engineer or something along that line, we could address it. On a case-by-case basis, but I believe that would be paid out of the city council budget.
The only thing that I saw in there that, that struck me that we might do is, is value of real property where somebody loses the value of the property because they can't get a variance, uh, and, and they may claim a loss that seems in excess of the, the real value of the property. I don't know that we were gonna get into economic development negotiation.
Yeah, and I don't know that, um, you would be making a, a ruling based on a property value.
Well, you could have, you could have neighbors.
That, in a way, that did come up in the last one, that the, the value of the property was less if they couldn't-
Yeah, that's true.
Open another store, you know.
Well, and if you have adjacent property owners who say, "I'm adversely affected if you do approve this variance, and I don't want that, that variance," I don't know, it's probably ninety-nine percent of the time, we wouldn't need any outside expertise, but, but sometimes in a particular case, it, it might be.
There's pretty specific language in the code about what, um, standards you can use to grant a variance. And loss of value is not one of those, um, it has to do with hardship of use of the property. But-
That's in the, in the city code?
It's in the Unified Development Code.
Yeah, well, we need to, I probably would ask then to make certain that I can get a copy of that, and, I mean, I know I can go out and dig it out. If somebody can send me a reference where, where at least I can go look it up without having to wade through all of that.
Yeah, I think, I think, Thomas, did you, you weren't, I think he, he was appointed after-
The training.
The training with Mr. Mecklen.
I got mine separate.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I think it does define, it kinda lays out right here, and I could scan that, send that to you.
Yeah, we can, I can send you the, the section of the code that, that gives those standards that have to be met in order to grant a variance.
Oh, yeah, or if you could just, just, just email me the references for those, I can go out and look them up in front of all. I just need to know where to look rather than having to wade through all of that. It seemed like there were four hundred and seventy-eight pages of-
Of the Unified Development Code, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. It is, it's on the community development page.
Not even serious insomnia, but, uh.
Okay, we'll make sure you get those standards.
Yeah, 'cause I think like, you know, they have to show a hardship that's, that is, uh, unique to their property, that's caused by the ordinance, you know, so. That's why, to be honest with you, last week, my thought was, you know, their hardship comes from those soils.
Yeah.
I rolled with it, that was my justification, so. Those are soils, so I actually thought, you know, it makes sense, but. But as far as, uh, four point ten and the closed sessions, I think this language comes from the George Open Meetings Act, and that those are, those are the typical reasons why a board could go into a closed session, um, again, I pulled this language from another bylaws, I think that's where it comes from.
Although we don't anticipate using it, it probably needs to be in there in case. Three years from now.
Yeah, who knows?
But as far as what you were saying, Thomas, about outside consultation, do y'all wanna add a provision in there that?
Maybe a member who- Will rely on staff to provide the information we need to make a decision?
Yeah, or something, maybe put something in there where, where a member could request from staff additional information or something to that effect. But maybe, I don't know, put it within so many days in the event-
They'd be our liaison with outside resources or whatever, something like that.
And if they, you know, if we have a case and you've got a specific question, we have resources we can go to, engineers, whatever, that we could get answers.
My next thing is five oh one B.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure about this one at all, I just put it in there, 'cause I saw another one, I was like, it's only fair, but.
So, I don't mind doing this, you know, so long as it's in Hawaii and the city pays for it all.
Well, this was a question that the city attorney raised, um, he didn't, he didn't necessarily see the need for this board to undergo training every year. But, that being said, if laws change and you need that training, I think, you know, city would send you to that training at the city's cost.
And I would take out at least one and, and make it participate in such continuing education and training as recommended by city staff.
Or, or required by the city council.
Okay, or it's recommended by city ca, and you wouldn't keep, or required by city council.
There you go.
Do we wanna keep the per calendar year unless, see, my thought when they put in the per calendar year unless was that basically if the city staff said, "Well, there's nothing on this year's calendar that is worthwhile for y'all to go to, and I can recommend one, therefore we're off the hook." That was kinda my, my thought process. So do y'all wanna keep this per calendar year unless such continuing?
Well, if you're taking out at least one, the per calendar year doesn't make sense.
So you take out per calendar year and then leave it unless such continuing, it's not recommended by?
You just take everything out, in terms of-
I think in all the same lines, most of the time, it, it'll be David Mecklen having, you know, a short session about it, some change in law that affects zoning, or, or maybe, maybe the city manager coming in and saying, you know, that we've changed some, some part of the city ordinance that affects, you know, like, like they changed the billboard law, you know, so.
I think, I was just concerned, 'cause I have seen in other boards where the board members didn't do any training at all, and, uh.
I think it's good to have it, that we have to participate when it's called for, but otherwise, there's just not any unless we're notified that, of the need.
Y'all wanna keep it in, so, so, so it'll read then, "Members shall participate in such continuing education or training program as recommended by the city staff or required by city council," period? Cause you can take out, all the rest can be stricken?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it, I think you just strike all the rest of that. All right, well, there goes my Hawaiian vacation.
Five point oh two was my CYA provision. Whatever the law says, we're gonna go in, regardless of what the bylaw says, so.
Normal boilerplate.
Again, good job, Matthew, that was a great effort on your part, thanks so much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I think all the rest of this is standard, you know, legalese that is.
The conflict of interest, um, that has come up in some of the training that I've been to, um, as to whether the conflicted member stays in the room during the discussion or not. I would recommend that if you have a conflict of interest, that you leave the room completely. Just for your own protection from you.
Now, these self-declared conflicts of interest, or what if we have somebody who's presenting and says, "You know, I don't like old Tom, I don't like that beard, you know, and he's got no hair," or something, "I don't want him booking on my request."
Well, um, I would read something specific to conflicts of interest in here, it was actually in the training that Dan gave us.
Yeah, and there's an ethics section of the zoning procedures act that, um, deals with conflict of interests, it's, if you have a fiduciary interest, um, I can't remember all the language, but we might wanna include some of that.
I also think it was in the application process, too.
Yeah, section appendix A, code of ethics and prohibited practices, my thought again was, I mean, shall we determine in accordance with the Villarica City Code and applicable state law, so that's kinda what I, you know.
Yeah.
That'll leave our fault back.
Exactly. That way, if they change the code or the state law, whatever, we're-
Right, and I'll add city charter in this to make it, make that, make sure that's included.
If you ever, ever, ever have a question about whether something is a conflict of interest, let me know, and we'll pull out that zoning procedures act and make sure before.
I guess if someone does raise, if, if a member raises that issue, or not a member, but a member of the public raises that issue, then I guess, do we have, maybe we can call Mr. Mecklen to make, if we can make a legal determination, or, or something as well?
We could, um-
That's not really easily identifiable. I mean, obviously, someone says they don't like Tom's beard, but they like my beard, that's probably not-
They obviously don't know what they're talking about.
I'm gonna have to rain all of y'all in.
We don't want young beers, we'll season beers.
The point is, I tap Tom's car in a public parking lot, and he hates me.
Yeah, right.
So that's why he's not gonna vote for my application, so.
Well, see, that's what, but you get some really-
Strange stuff.
Strange, yeah, you do.
So I, I like, I just, I like Janet's idea that, you know, well, first of all, we'll just talk, consult with staff, and if they, if staff thinks it's gray area, then we'll try to get somebody else to be in.
And I've heard people say that if you have to question it, then it probably, you probably shouldn't abstain from voting.
The only other thing I just thought of when I walked in is that maybe we want to put something in here that says, in the event of some parliamentary procedure or something like that, that's not covered, we'll defer to Robert's rules or whatever, or something like that, for guidance, I don't know if you guys-
I think I saw that in some of the samples, that, you know, the, the proceedings of the board will be covered by Robert's parliamentary order.
Unless otherwise, okay.
All right, who's gonna be our parliamentarian then?
I think you volunteered.
I gotta tell you, Roberts, that may be the, well, I'm not here, but more in some, some organizations, that can be the worst job of all.
We, we saw the important today, yesterday, that.
Yeah.
We didn't spell out a parliamentarian in the, the bylaws, so.
I'm just, you know, but if we make ourselves subject to the Roberts rules, then somebody's gotta know what the heck Roberts rules are.
Looking for, it's used to buy a copy.
There you go.
If anybody wants to borrow it.
I have a copy at home.
I think I have an EPUB.
I used to, but not-
Do you want us to have the chair select a parliamentarian to, at that meeting, if, if it comes up, because my thought was that it's not gonna come up.
Yeah, at that time, then, keep one of the members to, to rule on it.
It's always the first time.
Yeah, I've never seen it come up, and, and the city council operates pretty loosey-goosey on their meetings, so, it's just-
Not as bad as some other municipalities around here.
So do we only just mix the whole idea all together, just let it roll, let it roll out, or?
Let it roll.
Huh? Let it roll? Okay, we're gonna let it roll.
We can agree among ourselves that we're governed by Roberts, and, but just not, not tie our hands in there with it.
So is there anything y'all think I missed in here that I need to add?
It'll come up at about the second or third- It'll come up at about the second or third meeting, you know?
Yeah.
But right now, they look good.
I, I, I think it covers the, the territory and stays general enough so that, you know, that we, by referring to the city charter, uh, the city policy, state law, that, that, you know, if, if somebody had a question, we could always go back and say, "Okay, this is what we're supposed to do."
Okay.
So, um, you're gonna make those changes and bring them back at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll make those changes and we'll bring them, and, and maybe, do you want me to email them to David for his, like, the final, for his kind of pre-approval, or do we let him just do that at city council?
Yeah, go ahead and email them to him, too.
Okay, that's what I'll do then, I will make those changes, and then I will email them to David, and then when I get his feedback, I'll send them over to Rhonda like I did.
Copy to David Mecklen?
Yeah, well, I just want to send it to him first, and I'll get his feedback, and then I'll incorporate his feedback, or flag it at least, for our discussion, that whenever we have a meeting again next, or whenever, if we want to do this next.
Is there any urgency in getting this into the city?
I'm sorry?
Any urgency in getting this into the city, or the next scheduled meeting?
Next scheduled meeting is fine.
Okay, so we're easy to remember that it's on the agenda, it's all business then?
Alright, so is that the end of the discussion on the written bylaws?
That's the end, end of the discussion on new business, discussion of administrative...
Well, I have a, I have a...
So, you have a more administrative...
A, it doesn't have to be done on the mic, but I was just gonna ask if, um, I came today, uh, in, uh, in casual clothes, 'cause I knew we didn't, weren't doing any business unless somebody from the public just happened to wa, wander in looking for a cool place.
Well, your wife can be watching it on TV.
Yeah, oh, no, she's sitting in the parking lot, I got a note from her just a minute ago, um, but, um, I would say, you know, normally, our attire, it would be business attire, whatever that is anymore for me, for forty-five years, it was always cooking tie.
I, I would think that whatever the city council can get away with, we can do, which is jeans, sneakers, and a plaid shirt if you want.
I, I think that's pretty consistent, what I've seen in boards around metro Atlanta, you know, most guys are in pillows.
It is, it is a different world, okay.
But, Thomas, I'm, you know, I'm trained in the same way you are, I am a hotel attire person, but I probably wouldn't wear tie, and I would wear a coat.
Mm-hmm.
Like I could do last time, like I did last time, I think, that's just the way I am now.
Okay, well, that's...
Is, is, Sandra, you're, you're quiet, what do you, what do you, if, if we're deciding the case, do we need to look different?
Well, I think so, and I think when, uh, we were here before, I, I had on a dress and a sweater, so I, I think so. People take you serious when you look like you're serious.
I do, too, I, and that's kind of my, but I didn't want to show up in my Brooks Brothers suit and wingtips if nobody else was going to, you know?
So, this is, this is a gentleman's and ladies' agreement amongst the board?
Yeah.
So, I'll spiff up a little more next time.
Only if we're here in a case, only if we're here in a case.
Well, I mean, yeah, if we're here in a case or something, okay.
Alright.
And then, there was absolutely no mention of base salary, annual raises, bonuses, vacation time.
Medical coverage.
Neither are you and me, you're really...
Yeah.
Who appointed?
That's all I had, if, if you're looking for nothing else, I'll, I'll make the motion to it.
No, we still have to adjourn, are there any staff comments?
Um, there are no staff comments.
And we have no public comments, is there a motion we adjourn?
So, moved.
Hmm?
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
See you guys next time.
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Good job on, on the...
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Alright, do you have a minute?
Do we need to hit the little red button here for you, or?